Like a, like a...
Come on, give me the brand. And the thing.
It looks like a, like a ticket of faith.
Okay. Good. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the open workshop to all here. I'll take the roll call. Trustee Alonzo is here. Trustee Cassius is here. Trustee Cruden is here. Trustee Finer is here. Trustee Munoz is not here yet. Trustee Ryan is here. Trustee Long is not here yet. Vice President Wilbeck is here. President Braddock is here. We have a form. I'll turn the meeting over to Superintendent Wonko. Thank you, Dr. Maida. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Effective school boards commit to a vision of high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction. They also define clear goals toward that vision. During my term, this board has established clear goals that were accomplished. For the 2017-2018 school year, the board focused on three quality goals. Board of Education transparency, fiscal responsibility, and technical proficiency. This year, based on the horrendous actions in Parkland, Florida, and the subsequent social media threats, the board made school safety and security a priority. You did this in addition to your commitment to a vision of high expectation for student achievement. You made a pledge to focus on our most at-risk learners by implementing a tiered system of supports, the MTSS, for our early childhood population. Dr. Degnan will now update you on that progress of your 2018-19 Board of Education goals. He will also provide a brief update on the current status for high school graduation, New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. That's the NJSLA requirements. Dr. Degnan?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko, and good evening, trustees. In August, you established two goals, one in the area of student achievement and a second in school culture and climate. Tonight, I would like to address your progress towards those goals. Board Goal One, the superintendent administrative team will develop a comprehensive plan to guide a review of the MTSS program. A major focus of the Board of Education Curriculum Committee was to provide instructional supports for our at-risk population in the early childhood years. Multiple-tiered system of supports is a multiple-tiered approach to early identification and support of students with learning and behavior needs. The MTSS process begins with high-quality instruction and universal screening of all children in the general ed classroom. For MTSS implementation to work well, the following essential components must be implemented with fidelity and in a rigorous manner. High-quality scientifically-based classroom instruction, all students receiving high-quality research-based instruction in the general ed classroom, and this was accomplished through our differentiated instruction professional development. A second component is the ongoing student assessment. Universal screening and progress monitoring provide information about a student's learning rate and level of achievement, both individually and in comparison to the peer group. With your support, we were able to provide all students in K-2 with the Adaptive Diagnostic Online Tool, iReady. Two sessions of professional development provided in the fall, and we just completed the second administration of this, of this assessment. Finally, we introduced Fundations, a phonics program. Foundation serves as a prevention program to help reduce reading and spelling failure. It is integral to the MTSS framework, providing research-based instruction as well as early intervention for students at risk for reading difficulties. To support students with indicators of dyslexia, all teachers in K-3 receive two hours of dyslexia online state-approved training, and students diagnosed with dyslexia are supported by the recently appointed three multisensory reading specialists. Reading specialists are providing three non-consecutive one-hour sessions of the Orton-Gillingham approach. Our district MTSS team has been meeting periodically throughout the year to address concerns and, of course, review our INRS operating procedures. Next week, we will be meeting with the representative from Real Time, our student information system provider, to review the progress monitoring tool and the chronic absenteeism module. On the horizon, we are looking to roll out standard-based report cards. Standard-based report cards identify students' levels of progress with regard to state standards, areas of strength, and areas where improvement is needed. I would like to thank the trustees for your support and understand that next steps would require advancing MTSS to our elementary grade levels, three, four, and five, ultimately moving to middle and secondary levels. With this base, we are well on our way to providing additional supports for all learners. Goal Number Two, to maintain a self- and secure learning environment, including physical security, facility safety, and a reduction in amount of HIV. I would like to thank you for your efforts supporting our safety initiatives and, of course, recognize Dr. Wonko, Mr. Copaz, Mr. Fugu, and Mr. Carey for their continuous efforts realizing a safe and secure learning environment every day. So with our action plan to date, the district has replaced metal detectors at the high school, as the current machines are old, and surveillance cameras are being installed at the high school. Additionally, more cameras will be installed at every elementary school. The district revamped the entire radio system from analog technology to new digital technology. We purchased 24 new radios, 18 were repaired, and 70 are being reprogrammed to the digital mode. Over 100 batteries are being replaced. There are currently three school safety specialists in the district which are constantly receiving training and professional development. Tim Carey is now a Certified School Resource Officer, which complies with the state's requirement for school safety specialists. District safety meetings are held monthly at several levels, including the district, high school, and elementary schools. We are in the process of implementing threat assessment teams district-wide. We are in the process of hiring armed security guards, and all administrators are compliant for Incident Command System, which is how to manage large events, for example, the high school graduation. We are moving forward with handle care instruction. We did purchase a new utility cart, which has the ability of year-round usage and can move multiple students on campus. We worked with Red Cross for approved sheltering. Facility meetings take place, and you'll see shortly that we will be doing school climate survey for staff, students, and administrators and parents. With respect to HIV, we continue working with Renee Bush, Personnel Coordinator, on mindfulness and HIV. So I'm pleased to say that your board goals are rigorous and rich. They are supported by the district's vision of moving from good to great, and you are on target to complete this assignment. So congratulations on your goals, and I believe Dr. Maida gave you a copy. As Dr. Wonko said, with respect to the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, they really, what they did now is the students who are in the class of 2019 and 2020 will be able to graduate through the old menu right now. So if they pass the part where they...
The ASVAP.
Pass English nine or 10, but they can also take the Accuplacer, the PSAT, the SAT, the ASVAP, or ultimately go through the portfolio appeal. We don't know what we're going to do with the other 170 high school students, 70,000 that are in nine and 10, that's in court, but this gives us relief to move forward now with the testing season. So we, these students have a pathway to graduation. So that's a good thing.
Do you have the clock setting that you're doing?
New Jersey Student Learning Assessment.
Whatever you're doing. That's for juniors and seniors now, or you're doing nine to 10?
It's still, it's, it's English nine, 10, 11, and Algebra I, Geometry now two. So really, it's up to junior year, basically.
Okay. And where are the cameras being installed in the high school?
The cameras...
You're saying you're installing cameras in the high school?
We're putting them where the existing ones were, and then we are adding additional and some we're not telling you.
Right.
Okay.
What's the difference between the two, please?
Between what? The cameras?
The two cameras, yeah. Besides age, besides age.
Age is obviously the main, the main issue. We also have different models. Currently, we have three different systems that are in place across district. So for us to go into certain schools, depending on what camera is where location is, we have to go through that system. Our goal is to get it onto one platform district-wide. So when we log in as a, as a super admin, we can see all the cameras in all locations at one platform. At the high school, we are replacing with the new cloud-based technology, where it gives us a longer record space. Obviously, new technology. We could have up to 120 days of video stored based on the quality that we're using. The upside is, obviously, it's user-friendly because of the platform. It's not hosted on our site here. It's all in the cloud, remotely connect and check on whether or not the schoolyards are cloud, the front sidewalks are cleared as well in the way of time, and also any, any threats that may come in, we can remote in and see those cameras.
My biggest thing, I guess my biggest concern is that in the past, if there were, if there were an issue, it, it would maybe go back longer than the 30 years. I don't even know what the current time span is on the camera. I'm, I'm thinking, my brain says 30 days. So you said you could go back to 100, and so what we're really doing is expanding time span.
Where, do we time span? We're doing quality.
Quality.
And we're also doing storage. So we have, right now, we have the folder cameras sitting throughout the complex. Depending on that, that camera we have in the age, we may get only four or five days. So we want to make sure. So if something should go missing, and we found out a week later that it's missing, we may not see that. So with the new cameras, 120 days would be lower quality. Also, motion detect, where they won't record unless there's motion that sets the camera to record. With high def, we'll look at the 30 to 60 days.
With high def?
High def.
What's the timeframe on doing this?
We're starting on Monday to replace. We already have them on site.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have a priority? Well, I guess I shouldn't say this at this public workshop.
I got any...
There are priority positions. I'm sure you want to press cameras.
The plan is, right now, they're plug and replace. So any existing camera we have are going to be replaced with the new cameras. It's a fairly easy transition. We, we do have a plan to add more cameras, like Dr. Wonko said. That takes running wire and cable. We're doing it after every existing camera is replaced with the new technology.
So we have the existing one with the wires, and then we're going to even upgrade it more?
We're replacing, we're replacing what we have. All the cameras that are up in the hallways will be replaced with new technology, and then we do have some blind spots that we're going to do a, a survey on to make sure we're adding cameras. When we add a camera that's not existing, we have to run wiring.
I got that.
Right.
Thank you. So we're adding more, and we need existing wire?
Gentlemen, let me ask you, what's the status of the cameras at the ice rink?
That's, that's also discussed at our meeting. Currently, there are two. We need to add more, obviously. So once these are replaced that are existing, because it's a, it's a fairly easier job, we're going to have a survey down at the ice rink based on a recommendation of the security company to show us, especially upstairs, we get to the hallways by the classrooms, on where they can be placed and should be placed accordingly. So once that's done, we do, we do have spares that we ordered. We're going to use them to equip the ice rink with those cameras.
Tom, what would be the timeframe on that?
For the ice rink, I would say, to be fair, I would say end of March, early April.
If I could just say something as a former VP, and Mr. Wilbeck, you probably agree with that, how important the cameras are in our job and checking things out, and they're really a tremendous asset to us. And the more we have, and I think it, it just makes a lot of things clearer, and it's just a terrific idea to have them, and I've found them to be a big plus all the time. The other thing I'd like to say is regarding the MTSS, I'm so excited and happy that that's going so well, and the little bit I'm hearing is that the staff seems to be also buying into it, and that's, that's a big plus, and I know the training's going on and all that, and I'm just very excited that that's happening.
Thank you, Dr. Degnan. The district calendar committee has been working on the 2019-2020 school calendar for the past two months, and tonight I will recommend the committee's calendar for approval. Mr. Copaz will give you a summary of the calendar creation process, and will also explain the work he has done with the business and technology offices to upgrade our trainings and the services the district receives from the New Jersey Insurance Group. Mr. Copaz?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko, and as the superintendent just stated, the calendar committee has been working for the last two months. We've also been discussing and to set graduation dates for this school year. Our elementary schools will be graduating on two nights this year. If you want to mark your calendars, that's June 18th and June 19th. Those are set. Six will graduate on one night, five the next. That's June 18th and 19th at 6:00 p.m. And our projected date for Bayonne High School graduation is June 24th. That's a Monday, but obviously that can change due to inclement weather or some unforeseen circumstance where we would have to close school. But we are still working with three snow days to work with. So we do have a snow day. We'll regroup, and as soon as we get past this start of baseball season, as Mr. Wilbeck knows, it's probably the worst season for weather, we'll announce a set date for Bayonne High School. The calendar committee also developed a draft that Dr. Wonko has recommended to you tonight for the 2019 and 2020 school year. I sent it home in a packet. I also made copies for you. The calendar committee's draft was reviewed by Mr. D'Angelo, Mr. Woods, and Mr. Marafiore. A few items the committee addressed this year was the first day of school for students will be September 4th, and the projected last day is June 25th, with four snow days built in again. The calendar has three full staff development day sessions included and four half-day training sessions, but two of those will be moved to days where students already have an abbreviated session. So if you remember, just a few years ago, we had six extra abbreviated sessions for staff development. Next year, we'll be down to two. One that increases instructional time for our students, and I know that was a priority for some of our board members. We are also looking to move our 12:40 abbreviated sessions in the elementary school to 1:00 to get closer to Bayonne High School's dismissal, and that would give us an opportunity to feed all of our elementary school students breakfast and lunch on those abbreviated sessions. So that will be in place as well. And while we're discussing staff development, Mr. Fugu, Mrs. Duranz, and I met with Samir Sivaz yesterday. Mr. Sivaz is a Senior Safety and Risk Control Specialist from the New Jersey Schools Insurance Group. We will be expanding on our use of Safe Schools, which has been a success for the past two years, and is free to the district, and will also be using other services and programs from the New Jersey School Insurance Group that are free to the district, such as boiler, property, and playground inspections, defensive driving courses, school safety programs, and employment practices training. I'll continue to update as we put them in, and we, as we prepare for new teacher orientation in August, I'll make sure that you have an agenda for that. If you would like anything included, if you have any suggestions, please let me know, and we will make sure that that does happen. That is all I have, unless you have any questions on the 2019-20 calendar.
I have one.
Yes.
Just one question. Um, we've only, right now, we've used one snow day, and then we have one early dismissal. So within the calendar, it doesn't really change the graduation date. All it does, I just want it to be where, be parent, parents be aware, it's not changing our projected graduation date, especially for the high school. It, all it's going to do is change what days we have for vacation, but we already have three days still in the bank. It's not going to change our graduation date.
That, that is one model, and that's what many districts use, that they have a set graduation date. The committee met, and we feel that the instructional days in May would be full days, so we'd like to keep those as full days and then move those half-days up. So June 26th, right now, on our calendar's projected, if we use the two school days at the end of the year, that would push that up to June 24th, and then we would have the Tuesday after Memorial Day would be the one day that we would be off from school. So we would move it up two days, and again, that was a decision that we made, that we felt that those instructional days in, in May would better fit our district and the needs of our students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Last year, this year was the first year that we took off that first week of November, which included Election Day and the NJDA Convention. And one of the reasons given to us for that was that it would be, we were hoping to improve both staff and student attendance on the two days that were there. So I'm curious as to whether that worked or not.
Oh, absolutely. I can get you the exact number, but I, I believe when we were back in district on that Monday, we were close to 90%. On those days in the past, on those Mondays and Wednesdays where people go on vacation for the entire week, they call it New Jersey Week down at Disney.
Yes.
You know, we, we were at 60%. So it absolutely has increased and fixed that issue for us, and we, we do have that in our calendar for next year. And the nice thing is Veterans Falls on that Monday when we come back, and as you know, I think we have probably the nicest veterans program in the state of New Jersey. What better to acknowledge our veterans and our field of heroes on that Monday, on Veterans Day, and then have, you know, activities that are appropriate for our elementary schools to have a complete citywide celebration in our schools on Veterans Day, so our students are aware of the importance of veterans and what they have done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copaz. The business office is working toward budget creation for the 2019-2020 school year. Meetings will begin tomorrow and continue until all budget managers present their budgets. This will probably be a four-day activity. Last month, we received a preliminary report from our auditors, Hodjeluk and Morrison. Tonight, we'll receive the final comprehensive annual financial report, or you know as the CAFR. Also, security and administrator in charge are the next groups to use the NOVA time for clocks for their payroll purposes. If you remember, we're rolling that out throughout the district. Mr. Fugu will elaborate on these items. Mr. Fugu?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko, and good evening, everyone. The business office is currently working on creation of the 2019-2020 budget. As Dr. Wonko said, our meetings will begin starting tomorrow with all budget managers individually. During the meetings, each manager will present their budget to the cabinet, as well as Mr. Burnside. Once presentations are complete by early next week, the business office will prepare a proposed budget with the assistance of Mr. Brian Delusio. We're now moving forward towards our payroll verification with our admin administrator-in-charge employees, as well as our events security staff. Just like the before and after care employees have been utilizing the program, we now move on to the next group of employees. Once that plan is implemented, we'll move on to the following group. So when they do punch in, they put in their code, it does take their photo to verify that they were at that location when they start the job and when they left that, that assignment. Just to touch again on security cameras, this was added for the conversation before, and since we're talking budgets, I also want to bring up, once the high school is equipped and everyone sees how nice of a program this is going to be and how great it is for security for the high school, our plan is to create a list of priority schools to move them into elementary as well. Again, elementary school has the same issue high school does, where there are different camera systems, and they are older. We're going to come up with a plan to budget out in the next few years to equip all the schools with the same system, so we could be on that one platform. At this time, I would like to welcome Mr. Morrison, Hodjeluk and Morrison, to discuss our final CAFR report. Last month, Mr. Morrison was here to give a preliminary. He's now here to give our final report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. As I mentioned last time, the reason why we weren't able to deliver a final report is that we were waiting on data from the state of New Jersey. That data finally came out in the end of January. We were able to complete the CAFR and present it for your review and approval. The numbers that we had back in November, December, January haven't changed from then till now. The only changes that were made to the, to the preliminary document was the inclusion of the state liability for the cost of post-retirement health benefits for your staff. That cost is entirely the burden of the state of New Jersey, so it had no impact on your financial numbers. The numbers that we discussed at the last meeting, with you having had a favorable variance in your budget to the point where you now meet your 2% allowable fund balance for, for, that's a state cap on the amount of fund balance you're allowed to have, you're there. So that's a big improvement over last year. Our opinion on the financial statements, I indicated we believed it was going to be unmodified. It is. That basically means that, based on our audit, we found that the financial statements as presented to us, with minor modifications, which I'll discuss, were fairly presented, were prepared in accordance with the appropriate accounting standards, and those standards had been applied consistently from year to year. The, when we met with Finance Committee, we've met twice now with Finance, one of the things we discussed was the quality of the accounting records. When we first took this engagement, we were a little hesitant, because we weren't sure what we were going to find when we got here. Having, you know, read the paper, we, we had a little trepidation. What we found when we came in here was that the accounting systems were fairly well-established and were operating effectively. What that translates into for you folks is that the board secretary's report that you get every month is accurate, and that's important, because you're going to be asked to review budgetary data, and if you're looking at part-year numbers, you need to know that those numbers are good. And based on our audit, we're satisfied that the financial reporting system is working the way it's supposed to and producing reliable data for you to make decisions on. We think that's a very, that's one of the most important facets of financial reporting, and we think that they're doing a good job on that. With respect to your cafeteria operations, no subsidies were required. You're making money. You're going to be able to invest in additional cafeteria equipment with some of the, the profits you're making. That's always a good thing, because it leaves the burden from the taxpayer. And with respect to the recommendations, there were no changes to the recommendations that we discussed at the previous meeting. I mentioned then that corrective actions were underway, the biggest one being the modifications to your payroll system. Those, those improvements are ongoing, and based on the reviews we've done, we believe they will rectify all of the issues that we identified in our management report. The other recommendations in the report, one of them dealt with counting students for the ASSA. There was a timing issue, because for lunch purposes, students who were eligible for a free or reduced-price lunch at the end of one school year automatically carry over for a 30-day period at the beginning of a new school period. However, the student counts, the ASSA report that gets filed with the state, requires current-year applications to be on file for students classified as low or moderate income. What had happened for the 17-18 school year, the count that was done in November, October of 2017 relied on the prior-year report. So when we came in and did our testing, there were children who were listed as low and moderate income who, in fact, had not applied for a free or reduced-price lunch in 17-18. Now, we also suspect that during that, that count period, a lot of students who had applied for free and reduced-price lunches in 17-18 were not included. So we think there was sort of offsetting discrepancies. We were engaged to come back in to do the, a full audit of the student count that was done in October of 2018, and the ASSA that was submitted to the state will have no errors, because we basically went through every student on there to make sure they were classified correctly. And the, the, the appropriate lunch records were being used this year, we found. So that corrected itself. So basically, you're going to be presented in, at a future meeting with a corrective action plan, and I suspect that the corrective action plan is going to indicate that the corrective actions have either already been implemented or are in the process of being implemented and will be completed by the end of the school year. So all in all, it was, it was a very favorable process. We have, I have to, I have to thank the administration and the staff, because we can drive people crazy with our auditing process. When, when, when my staff is, is, is out to get some records, get some data that we need to, to evaluate your internal controls or substantiate some of the numbers on the balance sheet, they can be a little like pit bulls. And your staff worked with us hand in glove, and it was a, a very collaborative process. It made the audit easy. My people came back very happy with the cooperation they received, and while some of your people may not exactly love my people, they were just doing their job. But it, it went very well, and we're very appreciative to, to Dr. Wonko and the business office. But it went very well, and we're very appreciative to Dr. Wonko and the Business Office and all the staff. And if anybody has any questions about the audit, I'd be happy to answer them.
You had indicated there was a 2% average or 2% -- what would that be in dollars and cents?
I can tell you exactly, and I can tell you what it appears on page 91 of the CAFER document, $2,843,000. Yes, sir. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Mr. Morrison will also remain if there are any questions from the public meeting that will take place in a little while. I would also like to thank everyone involved in the process for their assistance, cooperation during the audit, and the work that was implemented for such a positive report and the results that you just received. That's all I have, unless there are questions.
Thank you, Mr. Figu. On February 19th, Bayonne Board of Education President Broderick and Bayonne Police Chief Geisler met with me so we could all sign the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement Officials, commonly referred to as the MOA. This annual memorandum of agreement will be board-approved tonight and then forwarded to the County Superintendent of Schools and the County Prosecutor for their signatures as well. That concludes my report. Are there any questions for me?
Can I ask a question about the calendar?
Sure.
All right, because this is the first time, I mean, I don't know if anyone else has seen it on the board, it's the first time I'm seeing it. So I'm counting three full days off for professional development, including four half-days. One of them is in the beginning of September, so that's fine with the abbreviated sessions, obviously, four, five, and six. But that's still, by my count, six days that parents are going to have to find childcare or leave work, you know, to accommodate this calendar. So what I was going to actually suggest to the committee, if anyone wants any suggestions or recommendations, two of the full days, if you can move it to January 2nd and 3rd, then that would give two consecutive weeks off for winter break for the students, and then that would give the staff an opportunity to come back Thursday and Friday without students for PD day after New Year's Day. And that would kind of basically give one block in the school year where there would be only one more additional day where schools close to have off for PD. So that would give them a nice two-week block, which I'm sure kids would appreciate, and I think it would be easier for parents to find childcare because it's right around the holidays. So just a recommendation I'd like to make to that committee because three full days, you know, and then three half-days, that's a lot to find, I think, for childcare. That has been one of my issues since sitting on the board.
There are abbreviated sessions, trustee, that are -- they're from the contract due to our open houses in the mid-year. They're three?
No, those are all PDs. Those aren't any conferences. Well, according to this calendar, those are, it says full day, it says training, half-day training, staff development. Those were the ones I counted. So I'm not counting the four for the parent conferences. I'm only counting the three that it says, staff development.
I have the one, September 6th, that we added this year. That's already going to be a half-day, the first three.
Right.
Always half-days, so we included a staff development on there. So we would have one less day for our parents to have to pick them up and make arrangements. And then the other would be in June, our first half-day at the end of the year, when we start our watch box dismissals on the 18th. That would also be an abbreviated session. So those six abbreviated sessions that we had discussions about, they're down to two now. Those are extra days, and if we could eliminate them altogether, we will, but we have gone from six to two.
There's one in May.
The abbreviated sessions would be due to contract negotiations.
There's one in May, one in June, and one in October, and they say staff development half-day. So that's three.
The one in June, trustee, would be a half-day. They usually start half-days a week before graduation.
You can't count that. You can't count June.
No.
Can't count June.
All right. So but the three full days, well, I mean, I made my recommendation, I'm just letting you know, like the three full days, I think if you condensed it into that week, it'd be two consecutive weeks off for the students, and staff can come back without students January 2nd and 3rd. And it seems like especially after a long break, that'd be a nice block for the staff and for the kids, and then, you know, that could eliminate some of that during the school year. That's, you know, that's all.
I agree, trustee. Continuity of instruction to me is huge, having been in classrooms for so many years. Continuity, you come in, then you break, that's fine, but I think what also has to be known to everybody who's listening to this, this is mandated by the State Department of Education. Am I correct?
It's 20 hours, so that's where we give the 15 hours through the three half-days, which is negotiated through the PTA.
And what's negotiable here is not the number of hours. It's rather the days.
The days, absolutely.
Yeah. So anybody who's listening to this on the public side, this is not something that we're just thinking that we're going to do. We must provide this, so.
So you're looking at January 2nd to be a full day, and then on January 3rd, so we'll have two staff development days back-to-back on January 2nd and 3rd?
That makes sense to me because we're not interrupting the continuity of instruction.
I wonder how much staff will come back? Because I wouldn't.
We're very successful this year in the new calendar we propose with a week off in November. This might be a push.
It might be a push. Professional development hours are required.
And we have them in there. We've met them.
That's what I'm saying. And I think you're putting in there, putting in there pretty well, considering what our calendar looks like. I like it.
Trustee Finity's right. Look, I mean, you're right. I'm not knocking the calendar. I'm just suggesting there are still three full days where parents have to take off work or find childcare, and I was saying, you know, maybe putting it with that break, you know, would be good and not to interrupt continuity of instruction because they already have off during that time. That's all I was suggesting. It seemed like it made sense, but if you're worried about staff attendance, that's some different.
It is a concern, and as I said, we're working on this as committee, has been presented to the leadership as well. So I am going to move forward this at the agenda at the open meeting. You can vote no, or you can vote yes, and that will be decided tonight.
That's fine. I just had questions first time we're seeing it.
Yes, Mr. Lopez, do we have a lot of staff that does take January 2nd off? Traditionally?
This year, Dr. Wonko came in and made an excellent recommendation. January 2nd was a PD day this year. The reason why it's not this year is because it fell on a Thursday, so we thought that would affect attendance for students, for them just to come in for that one day on a Friday.
Okay.
And we not only tried to meet all the requirements and to give the teachers more hours, we just wanted to make sure that we are increasing our attendance rates for staff and students. So that, if it was on a Wednesday, again, we would have had a professional development day on January 2nd, these everyone back in, which worked really well this year, and boost our attendance rate, just that it fell on a Thursday this year, so we pulled kids back on a Friday. If you see in December, we're usually in school on the 23rd, it's 23rd on a Monday.
It's not happening yet.
So we.
I saw that, yeah.
That was a great decision.
We made, and then we would have abbreviated sessions. Why do we have abbreviated sessions? Well, that's by contract because we owe the teachers for coming back for half-day on the open house for mid-year. So there are some issues that we try to maneuver because of, you know, the contract, but we feel it's a strong calendar, but again, you know, we're always open to suggestions, and we do appreciate your cooperation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I turn the meeting back to Dr. Maida.
Just some housekeeping. You have the latest committee schedules with calendar dates? Okay, that's for your records.
Dr. Maida, has that changed from what you initially emailed us?
It probably is the same. I just wanted to make sure everybody did have it.
It looks the same to me.
Yeah, this is as of January 31st. Like I said, I just want to make sure everybody had it. Second is the Hudson County School Board Association Student Recognition Program. It's March 11th at 6:00 p.m. Bayonne High School senior Sarah Massad is going to be our representative. It starts, I guess, registration, 5:30. Program starts at 6:00. We'd like to know, we have a sign-up sheet, we'd like to know if any trustees would be representing the district that night. We just have to register you ahead of time. So when you get a minute, check your calendars. The sheet will be up here by Dr. Degnan. Just sign in, and we'll take care of your registration.
I'm sorry, doctor, what was the date again?
March 11th. It's a Monday.
March 11th. Or it could be March 6th.
Okay.
Do you want me to sign this one?
The course of the snow, obviously, you know we didn't have our committee meetings, per se, but we got all the resolutions out to the trustees. We asked you to review them. If you had any specific questions, please get back to either myself, Dr. Wonko, or any of the assistant superintendents. So to my knowledge, we really didn't get any calls, so we're thinking that everything seems to be okay. So I'm going to go through the agenda fairly quickly because we have a lot of items, but please, if there was a question on an item, just stop us, and if you're a little uncomfortable or you need a better answer or explanation, we will take care of that.
Dr. Maida, just to clarify, when it comes to personnel, can we mention names out here?
No.
Okay.
But those, I will mention some of our resolutions we will be doing inside.
Right, okay.
So I'm just talking about the outside ones for now. So I'll start with communications. You'll see that we received four. There's no change from what I sent to you. I believe the only change I have from your original packets is on commendations. We did staff members for our Lincoln School flood that we had and our Andrews Street fire. So we have six commendations that we're going to be doing this evening. Okay? Is there a trustee who would like to move in second minutes of communication?
I'll move.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead. I don't know. A second.
Okay. Thank you.
It doesn't matter.
Next up is curriculum instruction and policy. Like I said, there were quite a few. Pretty much, they were pretty self-explanatory. I do want to point out one in particular, though. A30 was approval to adopt revised policies, and you see there were two that we had sent home with the backup material that needed to be changed very quickly, so that's why that's on this evening. If anybody has a question on any of these, Dr. Degnan and I will be happy to answer anything. If not.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
As trustee Cruden will tell you, with regard to the, what I read, I don't know if it's pertaining to the curriculum policy, but I think it is. Are we talking about Narcan on the drug overdose? Is that what we're talking about?
That's correct.
Okay. Are we training staff members besides nurses for the injection of Narcan?
Actually, Mr. Carey has been working on this policy for us.
Okay. I was just wondering. Okay.
The staff members that are certified through the American Heart Association, we certified all the nurses within the district, myself and Tracy Powers, who is the athletic trainer.
So it's the nurses, the one trainer, and yourself?
Yes.
No teachers, no one else like that? Because of the liability, why don't we train like one person per floor?
Because the Narcan has to be contained in a safe location, which would be all the nurses' places. Tracy would have it on her person, and I would have it on my person. It's just the location of the Narcan itself.
So you'd be carrying?
Yes.
And Ms. Powers would be carrying?
That is correct, yes.
And then there's a geographic location on each floor?
Each nurse is, and I'm just using a high school, you have House 2, House 4, House 6. They were centrally located between all three buildings. They would have it inside their locations.
One question, is there not really too familiar about it? How long, let's just say you suspect a student is overdosing?
On an opioid, correct.
An opioid, okay. Opioid crisis. What's the timeframe?
To administer it would be immediately we would administer it, and it's through the, it's a nasal, it's a nasal application.
How would a teacher be educated to recognize that this is an opioid crisis?
We can do some type of formal training to bring it out to the staff.
We can do, or we will do?
We should. We should do.
Well, I know we should. You know, every year, just a suggestion here, every year we do suicide prevention, we do the bullying, we do harassment. Perhaps we should do a.
Opioid.
Yeah.
Opioid. How would one recognize if a student, I mean, I would not know.
But the student is passing out because the teacher's not required to know why. They're required to get the help of a medical professional who can make that assessment.
What's, that's my point. What is the timeframe that you, if you inject Narcan, what's your period of time? Is it 15 minutes? Is it 20? Is it five? How do you help a student who might be overdosing? What is the timeframe?
We would administer it immediately upon.
No, I think she's.
I'm trying to confuse my question.
I think she's meaning, like, how long is it before somebody suspects something is wrong with the child?
Besides fainting?
Before, yeah, before you get to them, before you get to them.
I would say it'd be immediately upon the person assessing the person. They would check the vitals, look at them, they would check their eyes, just say that they would be pinpointed.
Do you know the amount of minutes it would take if someone did unfortunately overdose with an opioid? How many minutes would go by if we used the Narcan to bring that or revive that person? Is there a sense?
No, it usually, it's almost instantaneously.
Yeah, you come back immediately, I think.
They usually come right out. If they don't come out of it immediately, we would give a second dose within four minutes.
I think I have to rephrase the question. You're looking to see what is the span of time when someone is identified as perhaps having an overdose and you're treating?
No, I would say there is no timeframe.
There is no timeframe.
No, there's no timeframe. I think each dosage would be different, every person would be different.
Are you referring to like a heart attack? Something like correlated? Like if there's a long time, the chances of helping the student are diminished?
They are.
Are you talking about like that?
Or is it too late? When is the moment too late?
She thinks it should be more readily available.
They don't respond to Narcan, they're too late, first of all.
I think the bigger issue is.
How does the teacher identify?
If somebody just collapses in your classroom, you have to call. And I don't think it's up to the teacher to identify whether it's an opioid overdose.
If not, they just call medical help.
Just call, that's it. And when it's.
I don't know what you're bringing this up for. It's standard procedure. Something happens to a kid, they don't go right to call the nurse.
Trustee Cruden, you know I like to ask questions, but.
Just call the nurse. That's simple, that's why they got them. Okay, got it. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Thank you. I hope I answered, I'm sorry.
I think teachers need to be trained on it. Not that they won't be held liable, but.
Some type of awareness.
Yeah, like maybe.
Some type of awareness training, a basic awareness.
Yeah, like to show them what to look for.
Yes.
Mr. Carey, I'm sure the stuff the teacher.
If that, my kid.
We say schools, both, one at a time.
Trustee.
Have an nurse that have Narcan.
Both, 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 you can only do it one at a time. We can't pick up what's going on.
I'm learning the process.
Excuse me, but I would think it might be a great thing to bring up for personnel to decide on what kind of, if we think that's exactly what they need, some kind of awareness training.
It's not personnel, it's curriculum.
You know, if I might make a suggestion.
Who's personnel?
A lot of times, in agreement with Ms. Finity, you could even make up a website or a video that would basically orient the teacher with what to look for, what to expect in regards of calling the nurse. I know, you have to understand something. We have what we call Safe Sport, and we have Concussion, which at the beginning of my orientation with sports was totally a new concept, and then what had happened over the years, they began to develop the ability and characteristics of looking at recognizing and taking immediate action, which where you want might be calling the nurse. But even a website or a video that. that a teacher could go to to become oriented with what it might be, what it could consist of.
You can see the same difference if a student going into diabetic coma as you can see going into opioid overdose. You're not going to be able to discriminate necessarily. You can't.
Well, we do have safe schools and I believe they do. So we can assign this to our PLC over the next month or two. We'll look at the training, we'll review it to make sure it's appropriate. And then one of our staff faculty, PLCs, we could assign that and we could have all of our teachers, teacher assistants trained.
Ryan. You seem to have a minimal amount, oh, you're going to be involved in this. Because we seem to have a minimal amount, just the nurses and yourself and Ms. Powers. On the other hand, opioids are basically statewide, particularly susceptible are young athletes, all right, because of athletic injuries and misdiagnosis, misuse, whatever caused their tire crisis. How are we going to protect our athletes at events like a football game, road trips? Because basically abuse is hidden. That's what the person's trying to do. I don't need to tell you that. But how are we going to make this a little bit more available so that this way, when someone's coming back on the bus, it's not like we have a, we have to get to a hospital, whatever, when we might be able to, a trainer, for example, could be included. Or he doesn't want. But does she go to all our road trips? Is she available at all our games? You know, that type of thing.
She tries as much as she can. Obviously, there's two games she can't be.
That's what I'm saying.
Would the board be willing to entertain hiring another nurse that we could use as a traveling nurse for our field trips, athletic events, and so on?
This trustee would be very open to having.
How many opioid overdoses have we had?
We don't want one.
How many have we had? It's my question. I didn't say we want it. You're acting like you've had 3200 opioid overdoses.
If you only have one, it's worth the nurse.
Can I ask a question? Are coaches?
A traveling nurse can do many things. We need a nurse.
It's worth the nurse. I agree.
When we do field trips anyway.
Will coaches be trained on how to do this?
That's what I was asking.
Well, that's what, that's what, before you said it was personnel, I thought policy was curriculum. That's why I was actually going to try to defend you and say what trustee Finity is saying is, I think that she feels that the staff needs training and how to identify possible opioid overdoses. Like, I don't think that's like the worst thing in the world. I think that's a good thing. And also, in a particular case, what I think trustee Finity is saying is that, and trustee Ryan, if you guys aren't there, right, because obviously what they're saying is there's a big campus, and there's like five of you or three of you that are going to get this done. Could, is there someone that maybe could be trained per floor that could also have access to this stuff in an emergency? That's, I guess, and then on the road, you know, would a coach, could all the head coaches be trained to administer this? That's, that's what she's trying to say.
One, one last question.
Is that what you're trying to say? Am I wrong?
No, trustee Cruden, let's just say there is an event that's occurring, and you're not really quite sure whether it's a diabetic seizure, an opioid overdose, an epileptic, whatever. Is there harm if you inject Narcan?
Certainly.
There is. So there is a degree.
It increases your heart rate, absolutely.
Okay, so you can cause, cause harm.
Yeah, it can.
Okay, so then this, this is something that really needs some.
Can I just make a quick suggestion? Mr. Copaz has said this before. We could move this to committee. We could research. There has to be training modules out there already. We have to look at the legal aspects of what would happen if we do this training or not. And let the committee then bring back a recommendation to the full board at an open workshop. Then I could say, thank you, Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. On that note.
Yes.
There are police departments that are training their officers in how to use Narcan. They're not medical professionals by any stretch of the imagination, and they'll be the first to say, not me. But they're being trained as first responders. I don't see why a group of college-educated employees couldn't be developed to handle that type of training.
We're not disputing that, but I don't know what the legalities are.
Well, there are.
That's my concern.
Police are first responders.
That's different.
Teachers are not.
I agree with you, but people.
But going into committee, we'll just got to sit there, put it to bed.
We didn't have committee this month.
As a teacher, as a coach, I mean, I want it.
We had to. Maybe we wouldn't be here doing this.
Well, we're going to have committee.
That's the same thing as the account.
Can I make a suggestion?
No.
Please.
At your own risk.
It has nothing to do with, it has nothing to do with Narcan. Nothing to do with it.
Be careful.
I, there's a lot going on here, and I'm trying to pay attention, and I'm trying to sign all of these disorders. And I'm, I'm trying to look at this, and I'm trying to pay attention to what everybody's saying. Is there, is there any other way that we could do this at a different time?
Yeah.
Sure, come in earlier.
No, I'm serious. I mean, like.
I mean, I have the table set up in the afternoon. People can come in before the board meeting starts if you want to get a jump, because you know how it is. Certain months.
Okay, all right.
You got a stack in front of you, but.
I'm listening to Narcan.
I know. I don't, I don't know where to look. I'm like, should I look at the calendar?
$30,000 bill. Off the record, I'll give you guidelines. Off the record, I'll give you guideline when we leave this room.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, because don't say it. It was not off the record yet.
Off the record.
Dr. Maida.
So we just finished the curriculum portion of the agenda. Do I have a motion and a second? Who'd like to sign from committee? Rec. Committee, two of you?
Hello?
Move in second?
I'll second. Chris?
I'm reading Bill.
I know. Pay attention.
Next up is finance. Once again, you've had all the resolutions.
I know.
Doc talked about the universal state of, uniform state of agreement, which is Resolution B-7. So unless there's any specific questions, I would ask two members of finance that would like to move in second.
I'll move.
Okay, that brings us to personnel. C-1 is for inside. I don't see any problem with C-2 outside. If, once again, any trustees reached out to Mr. Copaz, Resolution C-2 is community ed. C-3 is the coaches. Four is our monthly various positions. Five is home instruction. I'll turn the mic over to Mr. Copaz. He'll review C-6.
Now, before we go to C-2. Flag football. I didn't recognize all the names. Are they all teachers from our district, though, that are running those programs?
All teachers.
Okay, is that all, is that something new, flag football this year?
No, we come on that, I think. This might be a third or fourth year.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
In accordance with Bayonne Board of Education, Policy 5512, during this reporting period, 11 incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying have been reported and investigated at the following schools: two incidents at Mary J. W., one incident at Lincoln Community School, one incident at Horace Mann, and one incident at Nicholas Oresco School. It has been investigated and confirmed. Strategies and resources have been provided to the victims to assist in recovery process. Consequences and remedial measures were given to the offenders. All documentation is being retained by anti-bullying coordinator. Two incidents at Henry E. Harris School, one incident at Mary J. W., one incident at Horace Mann, one incident at Oresco, and one incident at Bayonne High School. In these six cases, there were no confirmed evidence of the investigated acts of HIV. Strategies, resources, and remedial measures were implemented. All documentation is being retained by the schools' anti-bullying coordinators.
Thank you, Mr. Copaz. C-7 was the field trip. C-8 is being tabled, coming off the agenda. C-9, 10, 11, and 12, once again, were all, and 13 were sent home. C-13 will have to make a decision on the calendar. If there is a problem with that resolution, I will move it to non-consent. C-14 to 19 are all for inside. So if I could have two members of personnel that would like to move in second to the agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moving ahead to our non-consent portion, if you could move in second. Hoping to have an update. I'll start with D-1, approval of special meeting. The reason we're doing this is going back to our superintendent search process and the calendar that we came out with. The, well, just to give everybody a quick update. Last week, Tuesday and Thursday, we had our 11 focus groups. We had our two meetings for the public, one in the morning, one in the evening. We sent out a reminder global to remind everybody that they could get on and do the online survey. And that ended Monday. As of Monday morning, there were 134 surveys filled out. I was supposed to get an update, which I did not get for this evening, but as soon as I get it, I'll make sure the board receives it. So with that in mind, we have a calendar in place. We seem that we might have picked up a little time. So what we would like to do is we'd like to advertise for two special meetings. The first one would be on March 14th, Thursday, March 14th at 6:00 PM. Really, there's two reasons for this. First, the superintendent search committee, there will be a leadership profile report presented at the board seminar by the company that we hired. And then also, we need a backup date because we have to get our budget to the county, and that might be the night we do that. Because our March meeting is too late, and obviously, we didn't even get the numbers downloaded yet. So this will allow the business department to have a little, a little leeway on trying to get this done. So that's what we would be doing on March 14th. The second special meeting, that's Wednesday, April 17th. If you remember, we originally were going to have this meeting during Easter week, April 23rd. Well, since we picked up a few days with our superintendent search, I asked the company if they would be willing to come in the week before. This way, the district isn't shut. For us to have a board meeting with the district shut is a big hardship because I'm calling people in on overtime, which we really didn't want to do. So the company feels that they would have, now that's the night that the slate will be presented to the board. And the company feels that they'll have that in place for Wednesday, April 17th, and that's also going to be 6:00 PM. Okay? So that's Resolution B-1, is that we're going to advertise for the two special meetings. Can I have a move in a second on that?
I'll move. In a second.
And, thank you. D-2, you had the presentation of the CAFR report. Once again, it's on non-consent, but can I get two members that would like to move in second? Trustee Alonso, who'd like to second?
I'll second.
President Broderick. Too late. Okay, I have one other item on non-consent, but that will be for inside. If there's anything else that needs to be done outside.
Shut down.
If not, I'm going to adjourn the open meetings, the open workshops, go in for a closed session for legal personnel and negotiation items, and it is 6:21.